There we are. I would like to call this meeting of the Salem Kaiser District 24J School Board to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It appears, I'll get back to the mic. It appears that all the board members are present. Thank you all for being here. And we have a couple of agenda modifications. Under the spotlights, we will be adding an item for the signing of the contract between SKEA and the district. And there will be an extra announcement, 9B information item, which will involve OSBA Regional Legislative Policy Committee. So, that would be brief. Any other agenda modifications? Moving on, spotlights.
Our first spotlight will be presented by Karina Lee, the Executive Director of Salem Kaiser Education Foundation. And Karina, I also just wanted to say thank you for the lunch today. It was a great turnout and the awards were really special today. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all of those of you who attended and celebrated. Thank you. It was a great, great celebration. I think about one of the hallmarks of our community is the culture of volunteerism and the culture, the human capital that we give as freely as we give our financial capital. And I think that's what we're about to celebrate here again with our volunteer spotlight. What I'd like right now, and please, please forgive me, change what I do, but I'm, I want to pronounce this correctly, but what I'd like to ask is Mr. Hasachi Uchida and Shirley Igu. Please come and stand with our board president. Are they here with us today? And Kaiser Elementary School Principal Christine Bowlby. It seems fitting in the month of back to school that we have two volunteers that we'd like to recognize as September Volunteers of the Month. Kaiser Elementary staff states that they have been very fortunate to have these longtime volunteers who regularly support their students with their time and their talents. Hasachi Uchida and Shirley Igu. Hasachi Uchida has been volunteering with 4th grade teacher Diane Miller for almost as many years as she has taught at Kaiser Elementary, which is close to 20 years. He began volunteering after he retired as a way to connect with his community school. He says that he enjoys their energy and talking with children. He works with students in small math groups and to reinforce the instruction they are receiving in class. Mr. Uchida's tireless support, his patience, and his math expertise is very much appreciated. Shirley Igu, also known as Grandma Shirley, to hundreds of kids and teachers started volunteering as a reading tutor at Lake Lebiche Elementary several years ago. She volunteered three times a week and worked with struggling readers for many years. When Lake Lebiche closed, she didn't quit. She moved with the teachers she was working with, one at Kaiser Elementary. Shirley listens to students read or helps in whatever way her teacher, 5th grade teacher, Kristi Oveen, needs. The students love to be with Grandma Shirley and with, and share all kinds of things with her while becoming better readers. Kaiser Elementary staff, and I dare say the entire Salem Kaiser community, feel that these two volunteers are gems in the world of volunteers. Congratulations.
Our next spotlight will be presented by Karina Lee, our Executive Director for Salem Kaiser Education Foundation, and Jim Orth, our Career and Technical Education Director.
Karina and I are very excited and proud to honor Northwest Farm Credit Services and T-Mobile Huddle Up as our Business Partners of the Month. Are any of those folks present tonight?
Yes, they are.
Oh, excellent. Come on up.
Are you joining them?
Oh, yes.
Introduce Gerald.
Joining them are Gerald Hosler, our Agriculture Teacher, and Mr. Rob Schoper, Principal at McKay High School. So, I'll just go start here. Do we want to list all these people?
It's okay.
Are they all here? So, we have representatives from Northwest Farm Credit Services are Samantha Short, Chris Ekstrom, and Miki Hatley. And from T-Mobile are Natasha Wilson, Blake Ewing, Tom Yang, and Dana August Sanchez. So, a work event was organized this past summer by Salem Kaiser Education Foundation. Put these two organizations together with Mr. Hosler and his Agricultural Science Program for some very much needed renovations in our program. The Ag Science Program is one of seven CTE programs, or Career and Technical Education Programs, offered at McKay High School. As part of its 100% committed program, employees from the Salem branch of Northwest Farm Credit Services volunteered to help the Royal Scotts Ag Program and its Future Farmers of America Chapter. In the McKay Greenhouse, Northwest Farm Credit Services staff tore out metal tables and cleared out the space. They hauled out dirt and laid concrete pavers on the floor. They organized storage inside the McKay barn and power washed the outside of the building and gave it two coats of new paint. In addition to providing hard work, Northwest Farm Credit donated $16,000 to the McKay Ag Science Program to help with improvements like paying for a new drip irrigation system.
We also want to celebrate around the 100 employees from the T-Mobile Call Center in Salem who volunteered for three straight days to help take McKay's high school agricultural science program and the FFA chapter to the next level. T-Mobile's Huddle Up Program, team leaders met with SCAF ME to talk about serious projects that they might help with. I believe I gave you a buffet of opportunities on where T-Mobile's efforts could be utilized, and you were just absolutely engaged and enthralled with what had been started by Northwest Farm Credit Services and the number of students that Gerald Hosler was touching. The team members put in many, many hours at McKay. You helped us redevelop the Ag classroom. Gallons and gallons and gallons of paint. The greenhouse and the interior and exterior of the barn, and we will not explore what the interior looked like before, we'll just celebrate what it looks like now. In addition to all their sweat equity and hard work, T-Mobile Huddle Up also gave McKay a $5,000 grant to help both of those. The Salem Kaiser Education Foundation is proud to administer both of those donations for the McKay Program. The Salem Kaiser School District, McKay High School's Agricultural Science Program, the McKay Community, and SCAF thank both of these businesses for stepping up to make a huge difference for students. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next spotlight will be presented by Lilian Govis, our Director of Community Relations and Communication.
We're super excited to present our Community Partner of the Month, and I'd like to ask Four Corners Elementary Principal Phil Dekker and Rosa Garcia, the Instructional Assistant at Four Corners, to come forward. Our selected Community Partner of the Month, the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality, was nominated by the Four Corners staff. And attending on behalf of the Coalition are Jadera Juarez, Lucia Sanchez, and Executive Director Ann Olivia Palazzo-Angelo.
For eight years, the Four Corners community, with the help of Instructional Assistant Rosa Garcia, has collaborated with the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality to offer Four Corners' parents and children their Legendo Avanzamos Family Literacy Program. The Legendo Program helps students become solid readers in their native Spanish language, which helps them acquire their second language, English. The Coalition provides 10 weeks of training, dinner, and then childcare for the first hour of the training, while parents learn strategies to teach foundational literacy skills to their children. The second hour has students joining their parents to work together on reading vowels, then syllables, and finally words in sentences. Trainers and instructional assistants coach parents as they work with their children, and parents receive materials to take home to reinforce the skills that they just learned. For the last two years during Four Corners Jump Start Kinder Program, they have replicated the Legendo Program to get their incoming kindergarten students and their parents off to a great beginning for their educational career, working together to prepare for a successful future. The Coalition has worked district-wide to support our non-English speaking community, and last November they sponsored an appreciation dinner and cultural night for the district's bilingual teachers. Over 150 teachers and family members attended the event held at Stevens Middle School. For the past two months, the Coalition co-partnered with the school district to put on the district's first summer Language and Culture Institute. Hosted at the Coalition's offices, it consisted of 15 days of activities, events, field trips, and guest speakers to expose Salem Kaiser School staff to the local Hispanic culture in our community. The Four Corners Elementary Community and the Salem Kaiser School District want the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality to know that their help and support is valued very much and greatly appreciated. Congratulations on being selected our September Community Partner of the Month.
Our next spotlight is also presented by Lilian Govis, our Director of Community Relations and Communications.
The next award, I'm really excited to bring up members of the Salem Kaiser Communication Staff members. Karma Kraus, Brian Anderson, Erin Harada, and Katie Wallace. Filling in on photography, of course, you'll, we've got a rookie, but we gave him a good lesson. So, we're super proud. Our Salem Kaiser Communications Team was honored this summer for their outstanding work by the National School Public Relations Association. And I can tell you from years of experience that they, this is not a participation award in any way, shape, or form. This is very difficult to get recognized by the National School Public Relations Association, or NSPR. But this team was awarded by NSPR at their national seminar in San Antonio, Texas, last July, and the team received a Golden Achievement Award for their Moms, Dads, and Grads High School Graduation 2016, which Brian Anderson served as a project manager for. And I don't know, I'm sure everyone saw the video last year, and maybe you even got to be there, but it definitely brought tears to my eyes when I was able to watch it. So, if you're up for a good cry, you can check that one out. The Golden Achievement Award recognizes exemplary public relations activities, programs, and projects. In the Publications and Electronic Media Awards Special Purpose Publication Category, the team received an Excellence Award for the Salem Kaiser Logo Use and Visual Identity Guide, which Karma Kraus was the project manager for, and it, as someone who's new here, has been incredibly useful. Someone was asking me the Pantone colors of the red that we use, and I was able to refer back. And so, NSPR's Publications and Electronic Media Awards recognize outstanding education publications and marketing and informational materials, including print and electronic, video, TV, radio, social media, and websites. These recognitions are awarded for outstanding work in all types and forms of education, communication, and marketing. The NSPR Awards Program is the only national awards competition that specifically recognizes comprehensive strategic school public relations programs. And I hope that this time next year, we'll be standing back here, taking up more of your board time. Congratulations, guys.
And lastly, our last spotlight will be presented by Michael Wolf, our Chief Operations Officer. We had to pull.
Tonight, I'd like Stephen Martin, Charlie Spelonsky, Jim Goodwin, Jim Schaffner, and the rest of the transportation group that's here to support them, Director Michael Shields, and Ops Manager Mitch Hamilton, and everyone else, come on up. So, this is an annual event. Our Transportation Department is recognized nationally as one of the best, and they participate every year in a, they've got some serious hardware here. Yeah. We get a good picture of that, right?
Yeah. The Bus Driver Safety Exercise, also known as RodeEO, is a skills, is a skills contest for bus drivers navigating an obstacle course along with a written exam. There are three events, two regional competitions and one statewide competition. Our Transportation Department drivers and trainers volunteer many of hours of their time to train, practice, and participate in the competitions, and some of the staff also serve as judges. Salem Kaiser School District always has a good showing at these events, and obviously this year is no different. First place winners of the recent regional competitions are here tonight. In the novice transit competition, first place went to Charlie Spelonsky. Charlie, nice work. And one of the big prizes in the team competition, first place, Jim Goodwin, Stephen Martin, and Jim Schaffner. Nice work. And the overall sweepstakes winner is Stephen Martin. Stephen's been with the district since November of 2015. Nice work, Stephen. Once again, congratulations, and we'll see you here next year. Absolutely.
So, we do have one final spotlight. We do want to do the signing of our contract with Salem Kaiser Education Association at this time, and I want to thank both teams, both the team of SKEA and the team of the district, who worked multiple months, multiple meetings, a long amount of time to come up with a contract that we could agree to on both sides. So, anyway, Mindy, I want to thank you for your leadership and the work of your team. And with that, we will do a signing.
At this time, we will now have the supplemental budget hearing, and I will declare that we now have, the hearing is open. So, are there those who signed up outside that wish to make comments on the 2017-18 supplemental budget?
She's going to grab the sheet.
She needs to grab the sheet, okay? First, for the budget would be Mindy Merritt. I know I don't need to remind you, you have three minutes, and at the end of the three minutes, or two minutes, does the orange light goes on? Orange light goes on, and when the orange light is done, you get this. You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
We're ready?
Go.
Board Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board, my name is Mindy Merritt, and I reside at 2381 Teal Drive Southeast. I'm here today to speak to you, not only as the President of the SKEA, but also as an educator and a parent regarding the proposed supplemental budget. As an educator, I believe that we have a significant funding problem for public education in this state. The legislature approved a state budget that was better than worst-case scenario, slightly better than what this board adopted its budget on, but still well below the amount necessary to provide the educational opportunities the students in Salem Kaiser need and deserve. The need is reflected by the numerous additions outlined within the supplemental budget. Last year, I had a conversation with an administrator that I will never forget. I shared what I was hearing from the elementary members regarding the anxiety and trauma that some students were exhibiting directly in response to the current political climate. When I inquired about the emotions and the responses of our secondary students and how her students were, the administrator simply responded with a grave concern, and she stated, "Our students are silent. They're just self-medicating." That hits me hard. Drug and alcohol counselors are a critical need within this district. A significant number of students are impacted by behavioral or attendance issues, also have drug or alcohol-related challenges. My question to you as a board is, will three be enough to handle the needs of six comprehensive high schools, several alternative high school sites, and all middle and elementary schools? Three is an incredible and necessary start. I applaud you for this and building the students in what they need. Our district is recognized for our diversity. Last year, a resource for our second language learners was removed when the English language acquisition specialists were eliminated. Our English language learners are in desperate need of more supports. It seems that if our students are demonstrating an adequate growth on the ALPA according to state targets, that we need to do more to help them. Will five positions be enough to fill this hole? Is this a systematic issue with how Salem Kaiser runs its ELL program? How will our ELL population be impacted by the new middle school schedule of our multiple ELL programs at the elementary level? Which one is performing the best? We should copy that model. Are the new positions going to be in the framework of the most successful model? Then the loss of our science PA positions was a frequent topic here among this board. As you were going through the budgeting process, it is reassuring to see that this board is expecting science to be taught at the elementary level. However, the additional funding for elementary science materials will only be beneficial if there is funding provided by the professional development on how to effectively implement them within our classrooms. Resources without knowledge, to use them become wasted resources. Thank you.
Next would be Athena Gray.
Board Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, Superintendent Perry, and the members of the board, my name is Athena Gray, and I reside at 2210 Electric Avenue Southeast. I'm here to speak to you today as an SKE member. SKSD has numerous students with significant social and emotional needs. Students need strong, positive adult relationships. The addition of support for attendance strategies, as well as social workers, mental health, and/or counselors, is greatly needed. For example, last year in my classroom, throughout the year, I had 29 students, and of those, and I cry about this, but four were in the STEP program, one in foster care, six others were couch surfing, so to speak, with family, with friends, never a stable situation. Even with qualifying for the STEP program, the housing wait list is very lengthy, and the conditions that our children are in homeless situations experience is very traumatic for them, and the support needed so that they can be successful in our classrooms and successful in life and build that foundation so that as they go through school, they don't lose sight of what education can do for them is just a critical point for our students. And hopefully, the support coupled with others can better meet the needs of our students and thus provide that foundation for our wonderful high school programs so that we don't see them in a dropout situation. So, please consider those comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Edie Buchanan.
She's not here.
She's not here. Okay. Margaret Bailey.
Thank you, board, for letting us speak on this topic. My name's Margaret Bailey. I reside at 4220 Tony Avenue in Kaiser. I'm here tonight to speak on you, to you on behalf of the Ask ESP Special Ed Support Staff, working with, within an elementary school, along with licensed and other classified staff. It's apparent to me that there is an inequity in access to professional development. Licensed members are provided the time within their day to attend trainings for PBIS, Ready Gen, staff meetings, data teams, and school systems. As a classified member, our meetings are in isolation from the certified staff, yet we are expected to instruct the curriculum with fidelity. It is important to recognize that not all classified staff within a building receive the same professional development. We are often informed that the funding is not available to provide compensation for the necessary training. I believe that it would be powerful if classified staff within a school could train in collaboration with the licensed staff to ensure that we can better serve the needs of our students. My ask of you is to revisit the supplemental proposal and to utilize a part of this budget to provide support, staff compensation for needed collaboration, professional development. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy.
That's close enough.
No, no, no. Is it Shrepper?
Shrepper.
Shrepper, okay. Just wanted to make sure I got it close. Okay.
Board Chair Kylo, Vice President Lee, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board, my name is Nancy Shrepper, and I reside at 40520 State and Syle Road, somewhere outside of Syle. But I am a grandchild, I do have grandchildren in the district, and I've worked for the district for over 10 years. I am here tonight to speak to you on behalf of the Ask ESP members within transportation. As a bus driver for students identified with disabilities, I transport over 30 students a day. Not only am I expected to transport a bus full of students to and from school, I'm also expected to manage and care for each individual student and their needs, and I am only one person. This past year, as PBIS was implemented within our district, drivers were told that we would receive training. At this time, I have yet to have the opportunity to attend a PBIS training. Our ask of you is to revisit the supplemental proposal and to utilize a part of this supplemental budget to provide support staff to accompany drivers who are transporting students and the funds necessary for professional development to ensure the success of our students. It's not just for the success of our students, it's for the safety of our students. I can tell you from firsthand experience, there's many times, I have no idea how I got from point A to point B. And that's not a safe way to travel, but when you have things going on behind you, you really need someone back there that can make sure that they're in their seat belts, make sure that they're not in any pain or suffering in any way, and let me know if I need to pull over and we need to get help, and we don't have that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Pete Teller.
Pete Teller. I live at 1465 Evergreen Avenue Northeast, 97301, here to speak to the supplemental budget. And as an introduction to that, I just want to mention that the district received some attention over the summer. that the district received some attention over the summer, just after school got out. And as a result of that, I felt compelled to respond to that attention that we received. And as I read an abbreviated version of what you just received, I would like for you to keep in mind $4.5 million. Salem Kaiser Public Schools is home to 11 middle schools with a total enrollment of 9,477 students. Each middle school's enrollment varies in size somewhere between Walker Middle School with 646 students and Stevens Middle School with a total enrollment of 1,094 students. Set against this backdrop is where any conversation about bullying, cyberbullying, and peer conflict has to start. Brain science has revolutionized our understanding of brain development, beginning with the undisputed fact that human brains are not fully developed until age 25. That means that executive brain functioning in children and youth that contributes to such things as decision-making, impulse control, emotional regulation, and flexible thinking is in everyday work in progress. Applying critical thinking based on the neuroscience information just provided and including classic child development to the enrollment totals previously noted begs this simple question: What systems design came up with the brilliant idea to funnel 646 to 1,094 11- to 14-year-olds filled with teen angst, access to technology, and limited problem-solving skills into one single location all at the same time? If our community is concerned with our children's safety, then let us put our words into action. Why should our students suffer for our lack of investment in their welfare? Adequate and sustained funding for public education is an investment in our children's well-being. Adding teachers, counselors, behavior specialists, specialized staff such as social workers and mental health supports would dramatically improve the lives and safety of our children and youth. How have we missed this connection and failed to act on it? Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Schutz.
Board Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board, my name is Eric Schutz. I reside at 969 Mildred Lane Southeast. I'm here today to speak to you as a current parent of students in Salem Kaiser and a former district employee. Class size is a common concern throughout the district as positions were cut at all levels. There are kindergarten classrooms with over 31 kindergartners without any additional overload supports provided. We know these large classes are a hardship on teachers at all level, a detriment to students, and putting staff at risk. Former Board Chair Nancy McMorris Attix requested that if more money came in, class size reductions be targeted at the primary level. Her request was estimated to cost more than the current $888,000 being proposed in the supplemental budget for overload class to cover all grade levels. These proposed eight overload positions will be very helpful in the places where these positions are created, but it's not enough. This will be a broad support to all grades amounting to less than one full-time position for every eight school sites. Selfishly, I can only hope my kid's school is one of them. The additional resources for elementary PE and middle school athletics, it's actually activities as well, is long-needed. I hope this distribution of funds can be truly equitable. I've personally seen students show up to district-wide events or athletic contests and feel inadequate or shamed because they don't have the same resources that the kids at the other schools have. These additional funds will be important to so many students to set them on a trajectory that truly feels equitable and will allow them to focus on the activity or the sport instead of their appearance. This is a clear financial backing to the district's equity lens policy, but only just scratching the surface of some of the inequities that still need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita Glass.
Good evening, board. Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board. My name is Rita Glass and I reside at 4384 Falcon View Way Northeast in Salem, Oregon. I come before you as a president of Ask ESP and on behalf of our members about the proposed supplemental budget. As our schools continue to grow, additional supports are needed in all job classification, IAs, office staff, custodial staff, maintenance workers, translators, security specialists in every classification. As class sizes escalate, there is an increased need for additional IAs to help meet the needs of reading groups, math supports, and recess supervision. Additional support staff to handle the increased load on office staff in overcrowded schools are also greatly needed. I challenge this board to spend the money provided by the state on students and student supports now. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Okay. Tyler.
Good evening. Board Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, Superintendent Perry, and board members. I'm Tyler Skelll-Lakeberg. I reside at 1515 Constitution Avenue, Woodburn, Oregon. I'm here today to speak to you as the vice president of the SKEA on behalf of our members about the proposed supplemental budget. Much of the outlined proposed additions are on target, but there is still not enough to meet the needs of the students. Last year, we asked our staff, parents, and community members to reach out to our legislatures to fund our schools. We advocated for smaller class sizes, better access to resources, and appropriate access to technology and support services. We worked hard to get money to support the students in our classrooms right now. How can this district justify setting aside $4.5 million to the bond capital fund when this money was supposed to go to support students right now? How can you justify holding more than $2.4 million to bolster a contingency fund? We have student needs that were cut short by this board when the budget was adopted last June. Cuts that were made with the hope that additional funds would come through so these losses could be restored. You now have the opportunity to restore these needs so our students will fare better. A total of 66% of the supplemental allocation is going to be transferred to the bond capital fund and contingency funds. A bond, while certainly necessary, will not help our students in the classroom right now. Additional bolstering of the contingency is like setting more money aside in a savings account when you have a hole in your roof right now. This seems like a huge disservice to our students currently in our classrooms and to all those that worked hard to advocate at the state level to get the support for our classrooms now. Please do the right thing and honor the intent in which these funds were advocated for. Help our students now. We thank you for the additions and we hope there are more that is what is proposed in this supplementary budget now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the budget, the supplemental budget? Seeing none, I will close the hearing at this time. Okay, now it's time for public comment and we have two. Phil Decker. You're first on. Speak about an agenda item. Same warnings. You see the yellow light, you get one minute. The red light goes on, you get the done sign.
Sure, good. Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening, and Superintendent Perry and members of the board, glad to be here and to join you. Let's see, I wanted to speak to the Safe and Welcoming Schools item, the resolution, and appreciate the resolution and all that work that was done last year to send that message to our schools and families that they are welcome in our schools, especially in hard times. I also appreciate the policy related to ICE. If they were coming to our schools, very clear direction and training for all administrators to be able to handle that situation. And so I'm here just to kind of nudge us in this wave of DACA being rescinded and possibly we have this six-month period where we're waiting to see what happens, if deportations increase among our families and our staff members' families, for us to have a plan in how to support them. In the recent edition of NEHDA, the article, "Please Don't Take My Dad: How Immigration Policy Affects Our Students", there are great examples of how other districts across the country have created like a rapid-response network. Much like we rally around kids and families in other types of crises, this would be a significant crisis for many of our schools, especially schools with large Latino populations like Four Corners. And so trying to nudging us forward in that next step to create a plan of how we would rally around and support those families. We have collaborated with CAUSA. They have a Know Your Rights workshops that are available for the community, and so that's a good place to start as well. And just to bring this issue home to Four Corners, I want to tell you about just a wonderful young man who came to our school about five years ago as a volunteer for two years because his dream was to be a bilingual teacher. When he got DACA status, I hired him as an IA right away. He was amazing. Rock star with the kids and wanted to pursue his dream. While he was working at Four Corners, went back to school to Chemechada. And this year, the great celebration is that he left the district to go full-time at Western to become a bilingual teacher and took that risk without federal loans, without federal support. But he was going for it. And so right now, he's in limbo, right? We don't know if he'll realize that dream or if the rug was just pulled from it. It would be devastating for him, for his family, and really for us as a staff who's believed in him and cheered him on for so many years and all the students he would serve as an incredible role model for years to come. So issues of DACA are in our schools, with our families, with our staff. And deportation might be, increase in that might be on the way. So really encouraging our district to rally around and create a response to support kids and families that are going to go through those really challenging times. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice timing. Okay. Levy.
Good evening. My name is Levy Arretta. I live at 4271 Grace Court Southeast. And I'm here to speak on the Safe and Welcoming School Resolution. Really, I want to thank the board, the previous board, for having approved this. It was a very hard time for the community and the message that the board sent them was very loud and clear that everybody was welcome, that our schools were safe, that we were all welcome. So I'm here to help, to speak, to encourage you to make sure that this happens again. For the very simple reason that if it doesn't happen, then the message that will be sent is the opposite, that we're not safe and that we're not welcome. I'm the executive director of Mano Mano Family Center and we also have the Loose Youth Organization. We work with students in the district. And we recently conducted a survey of our clients, talking about the stress that they're facing. And in the survey, what we found is that about up to 49% of participants said they had experienced recently some form of harassment, either because of their age, their gender, or because of their race and ethnicity. And we also conducted along with that a stress survey, which respondents showed that they had higher levels of stress than other people of similar backgrounds. So I'm bringing this up as evidence that this is causing a lot of stress, a lot of challenges for our families. If you don't send that message again, the fear is going to increase. We are seeing incredible stories and fear from the community. And I'm sure you've heard those stories. And if you haven't, let me know and I'll make sure to fill this room up with people who can tell you lots of stories, horrible stories that are going on in this community, in your schools. And that's why, again, I just want to encourage you to pass this again because we need to make sure the message is sent that everybody here, every student is welcome. They're here to study. They're here to be a productive member of the community. I trust that you would do that, and so I want to thank you in advance.
Thank you. Okay, that is all of the lists we have for this portion of the agenda. Set that there. All right. Moving on, action items. Resolution number 2017-18-1.
Move adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. Was there a second, Mr. Lee? Thank you. Discussion, before I read the whole thing. Oh, I'm sorry. Jim?
Just real quickly, Mr. Chair, we worked on this last year as a school board and I know we've got several new members here. Just to give them a little bit of a historical perspective, this was during a time when there was uncertainty coming about from actions at the national level. And we wanted to make sure, I think, to address Levy's concerns with our families of all of our children in our school district that our facilities are safe and welcoming. And I know we're not 100% there yet, but I think re-adopting this resolution as a board moves us that way and sends a loud, clear message to our community that as far as their elected leadership at the school district level is concerned, we want to make sure that our facilities are safe and welcoming to all our students.
Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, then let me read the resolution, then we will vote. Okay. Whereas the Salem Kaiser School Board is committed to providing all students with an educational experience that provides an inclusive, barrier-free environment where all students have access and opportunity to high-quality education. And whereas this commitment means that student success will not be predicated nor predetermined by race, national origin, disability, economic circumstance, mobility, native language, sexual orientation, immigration status, gender identity, or level of proficiency upon entering school. And whereas the physical safety and emotional well-being of students and the assurance that our schools are safe and welcoming for all students and their families is paramount to students being able to achieve. And whereas the school board does not tolerate any form of discrimination, hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, cyberbullying, or menacing of students. And now therefore be it resolved, the school board expects the following. All Salem Kaiser School District staff are diligent in recognizing and addressing discrimination, hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, cyberbullying, or menacing as per administrative policy. Staff are informed of and follow the administrative policy related to dealing with non-local law enforcement, including immigration officials who enter any district property, and the administrative policy and procedure related to the handling of complaints. And all Salem Kaiser staff maintain an organizational culture that treats students and their families with respect, dignity, and courtesy. And the superintendent maintains, develops, communicates, and implements administrative policies and procedures that foster a culture that is safe, inclusive, welcoming, and celebrates the diversity found within our community. And the superintendent takes appropriate action to prevent and/or correct conditions, procedures, actions, or decisions that are unlawful, unethical, unsafe, disrespectful, disruptive, undignified, or in violation of board policy or administrative policy. Be it further resolved, that the Board of Directors will review, revise, if appropriate, and reaffirm this resolution annually. There we go. Anyone else want to comment? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And I will sign and date that. Okay. Next, resolution, adoption of the resolution for the supplemental budget.
Move adoption of the supplemental budget as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Chuck Lee. Thank you. Let me just read a statement, then we'll take the comments. The board reviewed and discussed the supplemental budget at its meeting and work session August 29th. The resolution is now before the board for approval. Is there already a motion to approve, so we're set? Okay, comments. Marty?
Yeah, after hearing comments today, I wish there was a mechanism that maybe we could have heard that at the time we were looking at it the first time instead of just when, you know, we've already, you know, we're ready to vote. I just wish I could have heard some of that testimony earlier.
Can you?
Hang on. Jim, did I see your hand?
No.
Okay. Jesse?
Can we go over again what?
Can we go over again what that 4.5 million covers and what we're using it for?
Mike, did you hear that question?
So the, the 4.5 million is the estimate of what it will take to take the necessary steps to prepare for the successful delivery of the 2018 general obligation bond. And that includes the architectural engineering work necessary to prepare for summer of 2019 construction. So this work is really to cover the design development work necessary to be able to deliver the bond. We're very hopeful that will be approved in, in May. And if we waited until May to begin any of this work, that would push the construction season out further. And we estimate that every year that we delay could be up to $30 million of more expense to do the same work. So this is an investment of four and a half million to do the activities, conduct the activities that we need to in order to deliver the bond in, beginning in 2019.
I want to ask a follow-up. You may have already mentioned this. If we don't do this, then what's the delay cost us? Because we wouldn't be ready for summer 19 construction.
Right. It could push us back. If we waited until the bond passes, then we've lost essentially a construction season a year. These funds are actually reimbursable to the general fund upon receiving the proceeds from the bond. So this is, from a general fund standpoint, this is a loan, assuming that the bond passes.
Jesse, did he answer your question?
Sure, yeah. So just to confirm, once we, if we spend this now to get the construction stuff going, once we get the bond and it passes, then it will go back into the general fund the same amount?
Yes, everything that, that we spend, all the costs that we incur in preparation for, to deliver the bond are reimbursable once we receive the proceeds from the bond.
Okay, thank you.
Sharon?
Just to clarify, is this a time for comment too, or just questions?
Just question, we're gonna, you're gonna vote, so now's your time to debate, so.
Okay, so I do appreciate the, the comments that were provided with regards to needing dollars in the classroom right now. I don't think there is one of us that disagree, would disagree with that. However, having sat on the task force, looking at the long-term needs of the district, and that's what this bond is for, it is to provide safe and adequate schools for all of our students, including equitable facilities across the district. It's, it's a hard call for us, but I absolutely support transferring these funds based on that, based on knowing what we need to do for long-term.
Okay, anyone else? Chuck?
Mike, as I understand, this, this four and a half million investment is really a good fiscal move because it would save us probably $30 million down the road. Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah.
Approximately 30 million.
Essentially, and, and that's what we estimate based on what we think the escalation factor will be in a year. It could be higher, but 30 million is the figure that we're estimating at this point.
To me, I'm supportive of the supplemental budget for reasons like that. But also, you know, I, I'm always touched by the heartfelt comments and concerns that are brought up. I agree with all of them. And again, it just goes back to what we've got to deal with, with the state legislature. We all want smaller class sizes. We all want more drug and alcohol counselors in our school. What I kind of liked about this is it basically touches even the science issues that we heard about at the elementary school level. It, it doesn't solve any of the problems, but at least it deals with the issues that we discussed and we debated as we went through the budget process. I kind of, I commend the, the staff for coming up with a good way to use that money that really starts to address some of that money, but it's bigger than what we can do with $4 million.
Okay, anyone else? Jess, oh, Kathy, then Jesse?
I feel strongly that we need to invest that four and a half million to get started. Having worked in the building industry for several years, we need that and we need to be ready to go if in fact we can come through with our, our bond. So I will be in support of that motion.
Okay, Jesse?
I also agree that, I think it's important that, it's imperative actually, that we spend the four and a half million now just because of long-term success for our district isn't gonna come in a day. If we spend money now, patching up the holes, it's not gonna fix the entire thing. So I think what will help us out a lot is if we invest our money, the money that we have, to long-term success, to find long-term solutions, because that's the only way that we're going to be able to fix things like, like drug counselors, like getting another drug counselor is gonna help out. But if we expand our schools and maybe our teachers can spend a little bit of time with more students because we decrease class size. And if we use our fiscal responsibility to make it so we don't have to spend more money later, long-term, this can really help out our school districts because we can, we can afford more things later down the road rather than right now. So I will be in support of moving this.
Anyone else? All right, all those in favor of adopting the resolution as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Next resolution. Making an adjustment in the equity lens. Is, are there any comments about this adjustment, or these adjustments?
Do you want a motion first, Mr.?
I, I will, but yeah, go ahead.
I would move adoption of the changes to the equity lens as presented.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Marty, thank you. Now comments?
Ms. Chair?
Jim?
I really appreciate staff taking a look at this. And you remember, we did this at our July work session when we were down at the Broadway Commons and taking a look at this. I think we did really good work last year on going through this process. And Linda, thank you for your work on this, and the board too. I can tell you that as this has gone throughout the state, other districts are looking at it and are looking at Salem Kaiser as a leader in this work going forward. So I appreciate Superintendent Perry's leadership in bringing John here from the University of Oregon and working with Linda on it. And I appreciate the board doing this. And I think the changes that we're making make sense. And they're not big changes, but they are changes that will at least assure that our equity lens stays up to date. And I would encourage this board, much like we just did with the safe and welcoming schools, to review it and be sure that we use it as we make decisions like we just did with regard to our supplemental budget this year, as we move forward with our budget and our bonding issues. I think it's really good work. It's a good document for us to use. And it keeps us grounded in assuring that we treat our students and our families in our school district with the equity that they all deserve.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else. All those in favor of the changes to the board governance to the equity lens? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Now we are down to the consent calendar. Are there any item, does anyone wish to pull any item from the consent calendar?
Ms. Chairman, I, I would like to pull the grants. I just have a quick question.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else? Only once, twice? All those in favor of accepting the personnel action 6B, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Jim, your question on grants?
I was looking at the, and I apologize I didn't get this to you earlier. I saw it yesterday and just had a quick question. On the G18 U2 freshman success at McNary High School, don't get me wrong. I support the great community of Kaiser and the McNary High School.
I was wondering.
But I'm wondering, you know, we have, we have eight other freshman programs in our school district. Did we, did we apply for other ones, or are there other dollars available? Because I know, you know, it looks like it's working with freshman advisory and counseling issues. And I know that's a transition year. I'm glad the money is going to McNary, but I also want to make sure the rest of our freshmen at our other high schools and at Roberts and our alternative programs have those same opportunities and availabilities as well.
And I don't know the answer to the question. If this was just a single source grant, that's my guess, is that McNary went out on the.
Yeah, McNary went out on their own, is my guess to apply for this.
And my guess, and again, this is a guess also, is that we can look at results of this and decide, is there ways to pilot at one school and then bring it out to the other high schools?
And Ms. Chairman, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I just want to make sure that we're looking at, when we do this, making sure our other high schools and programs have those same opportunities for those freshmen. No opposition to the great community of Kaiser.
That's, that's a good catch. I would agree with that.
Oh dear. Okay.
I move adoption.
You move adoption of, okay. Anyone wish to second the adoption of the grants budgets?
Second.
Thank you, Jesse. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, and it is passed. Thank you. Thank you. Next, I believe, is the readings, and we have none. And now we're up to reports, executive limitation.
All right, this is executive limitation number three, relationship with students, parents, and community, and is designed to provide the board with information to determine if the superintendent is, is meeting the criteria established within the adopted executive limitations policy. What you will find in this is quite a bit more detail than I think we've had in past years. And so under evidence of compliance, I want to just highlight a couple of things. One is, I looked at, we did a review of the policy changes this year, just so you could see the updated policies. This does not go into detail on what the updates were, but allows you to see the policy work that we did. I also have noted that our work around the equity policy internally and the equity lens from last year, that was good work on the part of this board and the part of internally as well. I do continue to have ongoing partnerships and relationships with external stakeholders that I meet with regularly. And then the safe and welcoming schools policy is another place that we highlighted within this. Lastly, I wanted to show you a new section to these, is this look back on or some pending executive limitations information. We have had conversations about mandatory reporting. And we are working with our law enforcement, or with our community partners to really think about how do we further define what is our obligation as mandatory reporters related to child abuse? And as soon as that's resolved, I'll bring it forward in one of our executive limitations report. We also relayed to our financial audit, there will be a report that comes to you in November. But we do have some new legislation requires that the school board approve an action plan on any deficiencies disclosed in a financial audit and submit the action plan to the Secretary of State's office. This requirement was not brought to us by our auditors and we missed that it was a new requirement. So we'll bring it forward to you. It's not a very delayed thing, but it will be more delayed than what was expected by law. And then also, we're changing our student advisory committee's work this year. And we're being, it's being redesigned and facilitated out of our Office of Student Equity Access and Advancement. And we're working hard to be sure that the student applicants and the students that are represented on our student advisory really represent our, and mirror the students in our district. In addition, I know that one of their goals this year is that they bring forward some sort of a presentation to you from that student advisory committee. So more to come on each of those, and then I'll entertain questions or to determine if you need more information.
Okay, questions? Anyone questions? I do, if no one else does. The complaint procedure is in English and?
The complaint procedure is in English and Spanish on our website. In addition, we have the ability with Google Translate on the website to translate into multiple other languages.
Okay. And one other issue I hear about, or have been hearing about, is the seven period day at the middle school. How was that conveyed to the parents and the students and the community?
Each of the middle schools provided that information to parents on their own.
In Spanish and English?
I am, I'm not gonna say that I'm gonna verify that, but
And then?
I will tell you that it's our practice in our schools, especially our schools with Spanish, that they do get their materials translated. I know that Director Beyond D actually helped a couple of schools with their communication. But he assures us that all parents were communicated with, again, the Spanish part of it, that's the normal practice, but I haven't validated that all those went out in multiple languages.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Comments? Okay. At this time, we usually vote to accept the report. We either agree with the report. We accept the, we waiver, but we accept the report or we don't accept the report. So if you are in favor of the report, thumbs up. If not so much, side or down. So time to vote, folks. Accept the report? There we go. Chuck, you're up?
Yes.
Okay, well, then it passes. I don't, it looked like you were just holding your pen funny, so.
I don't need support.
Okay, now the next item would be the strategic report professional development.
All right, Assistant Superintendent Carlisle will present our report on professional development and then hand it off to Karen Spiegel, our professional learning coordinator.
Good evening, Superintendent Perry, Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, and members of our school board. Tonight, we are visiting strategic plan item number six regarding our commitment to providing standards-based, data-driven professional learning for all employees to include culturally responsive practices and job-embedded instructional mentoring for all teachers. This year, we have taken some important steps that reflect our commitment to professional learning. You'll recall hearing last spring that we were discussing changes to our instructional coaching and mentoring models. These two separate positions have now merged together into one, instructional mentors, which you'll be hearing about more a little bit later on. And we are excited to share this evening's presentation with one of our district instructional mentors, Kelsey, as well as a teacher who was in her second year, Valerie, who will be talking about what this collaborative relationship looks like in practice. An important element of our work this year revolves around this term, culturally responsive practices. Perhaps you've seen or read about this work, but just in case it's still somewhat new for some of us in the room, some well-respected expert definitions come to us from Gloria Ladson-Billings and Zaretta Hammond. In both of the definitions that you see on the screen, they emphasize on how we use each student's unique individual backgrounds as an asset to their learning. And of course, our teachers want every student in their classroom to learn at high levels. And they have told us through their feedback that they value the professional learning that they are receiving on this topic. In your handout, you can see how some of the data from our most recent teacher trainings on culturally responsive teaching have responses from hundreds of our middle school and high school teachers where they participated in things from June through August. And while you are looking at that handout, please notice the number of professional learning opportunities that were provided over the summer for our licensed staff. These responses from staff speak to the importance that they place on learning that has an impact on their uses of curriculum, on literacy strategies, and reading assessments, just to name a few. The use of data of this kind from our teachers and all other staff members help to shape decisions that we make around what kinds of professional learning will be hitting the mark for teachers and all staff, as well as for our district's strategic initiatives. So now what I'd like to do is bring Karen Spiegel forward. She's the coordinator of our Office of Professional Learning. Karen will be spending a few minutes talking with you about our professional learning standards, our model for instructional mentoring, and then she'll introduce our other speakers to you. Karen?
Good evening. As we reflect on strategic plan number six, there are key words that speak to us that standards-based, job-embedded, and data-driven. Our, our professional learning in Salem Kaiser is built on a foundation of standards for professional learning. We believe that looking at these standards and providing job-embedded professional learning for all staff members is critical to the mission of driving student achievement. for all staff members is critical to the mission of driving student achievement. Research has shown that through quality teaching, strong school leadership, and the ability to connect every member of the educational community, regardless of their job, and help them understand how they are impacting student achievement is critical to our mission. Our office is committed to providing high-leverage, rigorous professional development for all educators, teachers, principals, district leadership, specialized instructional support personnel, and paraprofessionals, so that they have the knowledge and the skills to help every student in Salem-Kaiser succeed. As Assistant Superintendent Carlisle mentioned, we use a lot of data to help us inform our instruction. We have key stakeholders who come together to provide information. We have needs assessments from all stakeholder groups so that we can continue to learn and grow and think about where are our strengths and where are our needs. A system we use for capturing this professional learning is the Academy for Teaching and Learning. It allows us to have a warehouse, if you will, of courses that we provide over the school year. For the last year, since 2016 to current, we have offered over 2,200 individual courses for all of our staff members. Again, this system allows individuals, every staff member in Salem-Kaiser, to project and think about what their own professional and growth needs are. They can browse various trainings throughout the district. They can also use the monthly calendar to take a look at what is being offered per month and sign up that way. And then, in the My Courses section, they're able to document what courses they have taken over time, what courses they're signed up for, and then that translates into their professional development units. All of that's housed within this system and readily available. We also are able to pull data from that, so that, again, we can inform what kind of professional learning we're offering, what standards are they meeting, where we have strengths, what, what groups are we meeting most specifically, and then evaluation data after those presentations. A highlight for us that I'd like to draw your attention to is the upcoming classified pathways. Starting October 13th, we have differentiated instruction for educational support personnel. There's elementary offerings, secondary offerings, and alternative pathway offerings, and this meets the needs of all classified staff, from office personnel to transportation, to our classroom instructional assistants. There's examples of the kinds of pathways that our support staff can join, and there are others, design, there's design, there's technology. There's over 40 offerings in a pathway for this upcoming year. And the pathway is important because we want our, our staff to be able to go deep in their learning and not just have a one-shot professional development and then move on to the next thing. So, being able to pick a pathway and then follow that pathway for the entire year really allows their learning to go deep. Another aspect of our professional learning in the district is through our Salem-Kaiser collaborative clinical practice model. We have had a collaboration with our university partners since 2012, and we continue to grow our service toward our pre-service teachers, working with our partners Corbin University, Western Oregon University, and joining us this year is Pacific University, as together we design and implement professional learning at the university level as well as the school level. The focus of this work is on providing a pathway for pre-service teachers from teacher candidacy into service in our school district, so that they have a very rigorous pre-service experience with the co-teaching model, and that we have highly-trained clinical teachers to support their learning along the way. Since 2008, we've been awarded an Oregon Department of Education Mentor Grant, which has been very instrumental in helping us provide support, not only for our first and second-year teachers, but for our first and second-year administrators. We were just awarded in August of 2017, a new mentor grant for the Biennium 1719. So, we're very excited that we're going to be able to continue this work. We know that we have heard from our beginning teachers how impactful having someone come alongside them who understands what it means to be a beginning teacher has been. Our survey data tells us that if it had not been for a mentor, having someone to collaborate with, to help them, that they would have left the profession. And we know that we can't literally afford to have our teachers leave, especially those schools that are so highly impacted. We need those really excellent teachers there for them. And I'm proud to say that we have served over 1,000 teachers since 2008 in our district. Many of those mentored teachers have gone on to leadership roles within the district, mentors, instructional mentors, assistant principals, and principals. As Assistant Superintendent Carlisle mentioned, we have blended two very important models in our district. We had a strong instructional coach model that was site-based and really focused on teachers' years four and above. We had a strong mentor program that was focusing on the early career educators, years one, two, and three. And through leadership, we've been able to blend those two models together to have even greater collaboration, alignment of goals, and support for all educators in our schools. This is the new model of support with our instructional mentors. So, you'll see that beginning teachers in year one and two have direct impact with both a district instructional mentor and a school-based instructional mentor. The heavy lift for first-year teachers will be on the shoulders of the district instructional mentor with the school-based instructional mentor coming alongside, and then that begins to shift in year two with the school-based instructional mentor and district instructional mentor shifting slightly. We recognize that through receiving the grant, the first and second-year teachers are required to receive a minimum of 75 to 90 hours of individual support during the year. And I would also second that. It's not exemplified here, but our first and second-year administrators receive the same mentoring support with the 75 to 90 hours of support. As we move through the continuum of professional growth, we want to continue to serve our beginning teachers in year three. At that point, we know that the teachers are really beginning to hit their stride, really thriving, and really understanding what it means to become a highly, highly effective teacher. We want to keep those supports in place. We also want to think about our new-to-the-district teachers. Often, those teachers come with years of experience, but they're new to Salem-Kaiser. Sometimes, it's easy to forget, because you have years of experience, that you too need to be inducted into our community of learners, and that you need to have someone to be able to share questions and be able to find some support. And of course, with our veteran teachers, we want to continue to move them from good to great, to be able to provide those really important coaching cycles, and to continue to move practice forward so that we're all focused on student achievement. And I would like to introduce Kelsey and Valerie, who have experienced all of this range of work and can bring this better to life for you.
Thank you, Karen, and Assistant Superintendent and all of you for allowing us to come and tell our story and experience with the mentor program tonight. My name is Kelsey Harris, and this is my eighth year in education. Reflecting on all my years, I was remembering the very first day of school, my first year of teaching, and how nervous I was and excited and a little bit overwhelmed. And on that first day, I was in the middle of teaching an art project, and my mentor, my mentor walked in, her name is Jody Crowe, and I got so terrified that she came in, and she's watching me, and I completely forgot what I was doing, and I couldn't find my supplies, and I panicked. So, I just kind of grabbed a book and had the kids come to the carpet, and I read them a story. After that, I took them to PE, and I sat down with Jody, and I just cried. And I told her I was so embarrassed, and I couldn't believe that that had happened. And she said to me, you know, did anybody, did anybody get hurt? Did anybody get lost? Were you able to engage them in instruction and bring them where they needed to go on time? And I was like, yes, okay. She said, it's okay. It's going to be okay. You're doing great. And I'm not here to evaluate you, I'm here to support you. And from that moment on, we worked together for the next three years, and we had such a trusting, confidential relationship. I felt like she was able to help me elevate my practice so much faster than it would have if I had just been left alone. I remember the first year when she would come in and co-teach or model for me, just being in awe of her ability to capture the attention of the class and manage the behaviors and come up with these really creative lesson plans. And I remember thinking like, oh, one day, if I can just make it to that point in my career, I will be so, I will make it. You know, she was my role model. She was everything that I was striving for. Moving forward, I ended up working at Cesar Chavez Elementary when they opened and becoming a demonstration teacher in one of the classrooms that has the glass wall, and I was eager for that role because I was so comfortable with people coming in and watching me and giving me feedback. I knew that those opportunities would help me to grow because they had happened since my very first day. And during that time at Chavez, the four years I worked as, also as a clinical teacher, so I supported eight teacher candidates during that time. Most of them actually now work in our school district, which is pretty exciting to see. One of them actually, just this summer, just got trained to become a clinical teacher herself. So, it was kind of neat to be involved in training her to become now a clinical teacher. So, this last year and this year, I am a mentor in the program. So, it's kind of a full circle for me to now be in this role. And I've been seeing that look in teachers' faces this last week, where they see me and kind of sort of panic for a moment, and then I'm able to have that conversation with them, like, it's going to be okay, you're doing great, I'm here to support you, and building that trusting relationship. Last year, I mentored 20 teachers, and I've had an impact on 600 students essentially, rather than the 30 that I had had in my own classroom. And thinking about those 20 educators in the next 20 years of their career is just kind of overwhelmingly exciting for me and motivating to be in this role of support. I feel like Salem-Kaiser has supported me every step of the way and kind of led me on this path of success. And I'm incredibly thankful for having all of these opportunities that I've had. And I'm still learning and growing, and I'm really excited for what the future holds. So, thank you for letting me come and share my experiences with you. And now, I'll hand it over to Valerie, who I was able to have the privilege of mentoring last year.
So, my name's Valerie Mansour, and I teach at Auburn Elementary. I'm currently a teacher in third grade to 31 amazing students, but last year, I taught fourth grade. So, being in the mentor program as a first-year teacher made a really big impact on my success last year. I was truly grateful for my mentor, Kelsey. Not only did she mentor me in my classroom management skills and support me with my new curriculum, she provided me with engagement strategies, but just as important, she gave me the emotional support and the encouragement that I needed to get through that really busy year. I really kind of felt like Kelsey was my own cheerleader. She rooted me on throughout the year in the ups and downs. Something that I really appreciated too was that she was someone outside of my amazing faculty that I could ask those questions to, I could confide in, and I could even vent to in full confidentiality. I remember last January, I was feeling really stressed and nervous about a research project that I was going to do with my students, and I needed help finding resources and all these things, and I actually ended up emailing Kelsey on a Saturday morning frantically asking, can you please help me? I'm really not sure what to do. And all throughout the day, she would send me these amazing resources that would really help my students on Monday when I needed them. And by that night, my heart rate went down, and I was feeling better about my project that was going to happen. And the project actually ended up working wonderfully, and I was just really grateful for her dedication to my success and my students' success, even on a weekend, which was really amazing. Because of my time with my mentor, by the end of my first year, I felt like I'd made a lot of growth as a teacher, and I was more confident in myself, and I was ready to take on my second year. And though I know I have a lot more learning to do, in the future, I can see myself being like Kelsey, being a mentor to student teachers or to students in the district, teachers in the district. So, I just want to thank you, Kelsey, and the mentor program for valuing new teachers and for helping me succeed in my first year. Thank you.
Please join us in thanking Kelsey and Valerie for coming and sharing their experiences with us. Are there any questions?
Questions? Jim, Chuck?
So, I just have a couple, Kelly. How many district instructional mentors do we have?
We have 0.5 allocation of instructional mentoring for every school in the district. Some schools have augmented that with their own title funds, if they have Title I funding. At our secondary schools, we have also utilized Title II funding to augment those positions. And then, we have 10.5, 10.5 district-level instructional mentors.
Okay. My next question, I don't know, Kelly, if you're going to be able to answer it, so maybe it's a question for Superintendent Perry. One of the people who testified talked about PBIS for our school bus. And I know one of the things in order to make PBIS successful, you have to be systemic through the district. So, you can see where my question's going to come. Have we done PBIS training for our school bus drivers?
We can, and we will, and we have just embarked on the district-wide systematic training. You begin with leadership teams, and you begin developing that school leadership culture that can start. We're in the early years of implementation. Fully implemented will take us five to six years. But during that time, there will be additional training for all employee groups that work with students.
And I want to just, I think we already actually have done some with our bus drivers already, and I can get that for you, because I know that Terry Lewis went out and did some last year.
I know we have a lot of bus drivers, but I, and I also know we're in the infancy of PBIS implementing in our district. But all the reading I've done on it says that you have to have it from top to bottom in order to make it real.
Correct.
Effective and embedded, and so that kids are treated the same the minute they step onto a school property, which for some of them, it's the bus, the first thing in the morning, to the classroom, to the playrooms, outside, to the recess, to everything, you got to have that systemic. So, I just want to make sure, not taking any shots at our teachers. I know we, we focus a lot on our training for our teachers, which is important, but I want to make sure we're doing that training for our classified employees as well.
Let me get you a little more detail on that, but I do believe last year, of course, we have new bus drivers in many places this year too, but.
Sure. Thank you.
I'll give you the detail.
Chuck?
You know, I kind of got the answer from the, the two ladies that talked to us a little bit, but when does this, with huge class sizes and the lack of planning time and everything else, when does this mentoring happen?
Physically, I mean.
That's a great question. And so, it happens during the school day. Most of the time, it's really job-embedded, so it's finding that time during planning time to really sit down and, and be that guide on the side. So, instead of a teacher planning all by themselves, they actually have their mentor alongside. Some of that time is just sitting down at lunch together and, and debriefing and, and kind of planning ahead. So, we try to make that happen within the, the contract day as much as possible. There's also times that it happens before school and it happens after school.
And on Saturdays.
And on Saturdays, yep.
I, I guess the other question I have is, I'm, I'm sure there must be new teachers to the district that just aren't into having a mentor? You know, that, that they know it all, and they don't need the help? Does that, does that come up?
That's a very interesting question. I think that when we, mentoring has been in Oregon since 2008. At this point, I, I would say that in 2008, we had far more possibilities of resistant teachers. What has happened over the course of the last 10 years is that it's become very much embedded in their university programs, and now they come to us expecting to get mentored. We had one teacher last year on, it's an anonymous survey, but said, I actually looked at all of the districts who had mentor programs when I was going to choose a place where I was going to apply. was gonna apply. I looked at all the places where they had mentor programs. If they didn't, I eliminated them. Then I called around and I found out where they had the best mentor program, and that was Salem Kaiser, and that's why I'm here." So I think they're coming to us expecting that level of support, connection, and collaboration.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Jessie?
So the, these mentors, is that like a full-time position? Is that what this person does, day in, day out?
Correct.
Okay. And how many do we have within our district?
So the district instructional mentors at the district level, we have 10.5. That person also fulfills another role. And then we have, as Assistant Superintendent Carlisle said, one at every school, whether they have another dual role attached to that, but there's one at every school, and that's their full release responsibility.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else? Okay. Karen, on the, Kelly, whoever, the summer 2017 professional learning, this would appear that we had over 3,000 participants at the elementary, middle, high school levels, taking the courses, whatever they are, in June. I didn't realize we had that many educational people. So I'm assuming these are counted more than once?
We had that many participations.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make, that's what I was trying to understand, is I'm doing the math, I'm going, okay, because it says participants, not participations. That's just a minor point. And then, when are most of these things offered, these professional development activities? During the day, at the end of the day, on my own time, on weekends? When?
It's a little bit of everything. Sometimes, the only time that we can bring trainers in dictates when we do the professional learning activity, and it might be during the school day. We try to limit that, of course, because then we're taking teachers out of the classrooms for that.
So we expect them to do it at night or on their own time?
Evenings, weekends, summer, sure.
Could I add?
And that's unpaid time?
Some of it is, some of it is volunteer time.
Okay, like the Avid trainings over the summer, those are unpaid times?
Mostly, yes.
Mostly?
Mostly.
I thought they were completely unpaid.
We had, in the August, culturally responsive trainings, there was pay for those because it was a trainer-of-trainer model, different than what we have in the Path training.
Okay. All right.
I just wanna make a comment too, that there were so many this summer because we added those snow days at the end. So we chose that second, that week after that there was professional development, rather than bringing kids back that week. So like the, I think the, most of the literacy instruction and the middle school culturally responsive training and the site-based things were all during contract time, paid time.
Correct.
That's why there were so many this summer.
So another question down here.
Kathy?
I'm extremely concerned about our dropout rate, that we have to increase the engagement of those students and early on, and keep them engaged if we possibly can. Is this a particular concern of the mentors? Do they have ideas to help staff do that?
Absolutely. So that is a high concern, and we know that when we can help teachers feel very successful and very connected to their students, building relationships, building strong relationships, that that's going to be part of that engagement process. So there is deep learning around how do we engage students, and we do that kind of mentoring within the classroom. It's hard to pull out and just do a class and then expect it to happen in their own classroom. So we look at bringing the mentor in, really giving that important feedback right in the moment, perhaps doing some modeling or co-teaching so that they can learn those strategies. Another opportunity is when we have a mentor do the actual teaching and have another mentor sit alongside the teacher and do whisper coaching so that we can capture some of those really important moves that might have been missed by a beginning teacher.
Anyone else? Jessie?
I can't help but notice that the, in the middle school section, it says that 10% of them feel that it wasn't very valuable to their time, which is about 1 in 10. Did they give like a reason? Is there a, like, do we know why they didn't feel like it was a valuable use of their time?
I have not been able to drill down very far in that particular set of data. What I do notice is that it was happening in June during the required professional development time. And it might be that some people had a stronger opinion about spending their time doing something else. I don't know that for sure, however.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you both.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to propose that we take a five-minute break. So we will come back and we will start with the bond update. So if they need to prepare any slides or anything.
It's a great idea.
Five minutes.
All right, we are now back, back on schedule, back on the agenda. We'll now have the presentation, 8C Bond Update. And that would be Lillian and Mike.
Yes. All right. Good evening, Chair Kylo, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board. Tonight, Lillian Govis, our new Director of Community Relations and Communications, and I will be providing you with an update on the 2018 bond program and engagement campaign. And it seems to have worked in the past, yes. We'll start with an overall program update. As a reminder, wanted to make sure that we highlighted, basically, you've seen this, a larger version of this document, the last board meeting. But essentially, what we wanna highlight is the fact that you'll be receiving regular program updates, leading up to a few scheduled decision points for the board in November, December, with the final bond package decision in January, followed in February by the final bond title decision. And so there's information coming to you to inform you as you make those decisions in three primary areas. We'll have a conversation later this month at a work session for land acquisition. You can see in October, we'll be bringing you additional information on special education needs at the high schools. And in November, we'll be talking about seismic considerations. And staff will be presenting this information at work sessions, as I had mentioned, starting later this month through November. And related to the seismic information, staff will be pulling together a seismic panel to review available information, including the district's approach to identifying and addressing the seismic needs. The panel's work will be part of the seismic assessment update in November. And also, wanted to inform the board that we're moving forward with the solicitation for architectural engineering and related services in support of the 2018 bond. In fact, there is a mandatory pre-proposal meeting for all interested A&E teams that will be proposing on the RFP tomorrow afternoon. So just wanted to keep you up to date that we are moving forward, as we had discussed There was a question about opportunities for staff input, and so we have a few here that I wanted to go over briefly with you. We have a conceptual design review, and I'll get into that in a little more detail in the next slide. We have master planning process, which actually occurs, it's a site-specific process, but it's very extensive for each site that will be receiving capital construction improvements. And it's actually part of the design process. And then, we have an educational specifications process where we review, revise, and in some cases, will be developing new education specs. For instance, in the base bond proposal, we have a new elementary school proposed. We have design specifications, educational specifications for elementary schools from the 2008 bond, but it will be important for us to pull the teams together that include staff to review and potentially revise those specifications as part of the design process for the new school. I'm happy to take questions all along.
How are you defining staff?
Well, that's across the board, from the administration, licensed staff, and classified staff.
So you're talking, when you're using staff here, it's all staff, not just building administrators?
Right, for the master planning process.
Yeah, well, whatever this slide is, yeah.
And yes, and the education specifications. The conceptual design review, we'll talk about that in a moment, and we'll define staff there too.
Where, where and when will these types of be, these meetings?
Well, perhaps that's a good transition to the next slide.
All right.
So what you see here is our conceptual design review timeline, and you see the 16 elementary schools, the six middle schools, and the six high schools. These are the schools that will be receiving capital construction projects, so the additions, expansions of cafeterias or gymnasiums. And so, when we're talking about staff in these, these are very site-specific reviews. And so we have conceptual designs based on the specific limitations of a particular site. So we'll need to invite the principals, assistant principals, as well, so the administration. We have office managers, and depending on the work that's planned for that site, then if there's a gym expansion or a multipurpose PE room, we'd need the PE teacher. There's library expansion or enhancements, we'd want the library assistant. So these conceptual design review meetings are very specific to make sure that we can verify the functionality of the conceptual design.
Okay, Jim had a question.
So Mike, real quick, I don't see Auburn on the list.
Auburn is not, the school itself is not receiving any capital construction, there's no addition.
I thought we were building a new Auburn.
And we are building a new elementary school, and that will be part of the design educational specification review that I talked about, where we'll pull the people together to review and perhaps develop...
I shouldn't see it on this list, so that's a different list of review then?
That is the education specification development that we'll do. We already have, we're not starting from ground zero with a new elementary school.
Right, I know.
And so, but what we wanna do is pull the right people together to review the ed specs that we currently have for our elementary schools. And so that's where the involvement would be for the new elementary school.
Okay.
And so what you see here is basically a six-week period with overlapping schedules. So we have two weeks, starting next week, for the elementary conceptual design reviews. The last scheduled week of the elementary two-week period will be the first scheduled week of the middle school two-week period, and then the last week of the middle school two-week period will be the first week of the high school two-week scheduled period. So we can, we can conduct all these meetings within the six-week period, and if there are any considerations that need to be brought forward to the board, we have plenty of time to do that, to keep you on track for the decisions that need to be made. And before we transition to Lillian and the engagement campaign, I just check, see if there are any other questions? All right then. Then I'll be handing this device over to Lillian.
And so I just wanted to give a, take a quick moment to say, you know, I've only been here two weeks, which is crazy to think about, that it's not been that long. And I feel already so that I've got a deep background in what we're working with here, and that is in no small part because of Karma Kraus, who's here from our team, who has just done outstanding work on everything so far, and of course, Mike. And so, in order to come in and sound like an expert, you just kinda listen to the experts, right? And so that's kind of what the purpose of the toolkit that you have in front of you with the flash drive, in case you're more of a tech person versus a paper person. This allows you to have the same educational points that Mike can rattle off without thinking twice about it, that others of us may need some more data points. So for me, you know, just kind of the situation that we're working with, since 2008, we've grown by almost 2,000 students, and we're predicted to grow another thousand in the next five years, which is significant. That's the size of a middle school. If we don't do anything, then we'll be short by 2,200 high school seats by 2025 because we'll have to remove those trailers that are at their end of life. And so, so that puts us in a unique position when it comes to talking about our facility needs. And so, looking at, you know, what are, what we're looking for with a return on investment, of course, it's a tax levy rate, a proposed tax levy rate between $1.28 and $1.39 per thousand of assessed property value, and improvements to nearly every facility. And then, of course, you've got your little students practicing their earthquake drill there. So in terms of the strategy that you requested from us, what we wanna make sure is that, just like with you, just like with me, all of our employees are aware of what we're doing and what we're hoping to achieve. And so with that, we're utilizing an inside-out approach, and I'm very excited about meeting with the heads of our labor groups to ensure that we're communicating with them. But of course, the inside-out approach goes, you guys are pretty important in that, so that's why we're here tonight. Next, you know, and we'll also be communicating very basic information about how to ensure you're registered. For me, the way you guys vote is crazy. We don't, we don't vote like that on the East Coast. So ensuring that everyone understands what the voting process is, I'm happy to say I got registered to vote at the Oregon State Fair right after I watched a pig race. So I'm ready to go here in Oregon. So what we're working with, and there's a little bit about our strategy, just very top-line, purely educational. And so, we've disseminated these toolkits to you so that you can be as smart as Mike or smarter. We'll be working with all of our principals on a communications workshop. And that's not just about bond information, it's also kind of discussing some changes in how we'll be approaching our communications more proactively with parents. I know we had a few lockdowns on the very first day, and what I saw in our social media feed was that parents were saying, hey, we're not using this to talk to us. And so, I'm meeting with the law enforcement agencies later this week to make sure that we're all in alignment in terms of that communication strategy. So talking with the principals, ensuring that they also have toolkits that help them. Those toolkits will include the information that they need to ensure that their employees go about things appropriately, and that includes the do's and don'ts when communicating about bond referendums, so that, so that we stay in our lane. And so we'll be working on scheduling, in October, we'll be scheduling the Listening and Learning Tour at all six of the feeder schools so that we can share the big-picture information with the community and make sure that those key pieces that Mike was talking about get met, but in a bigger-picture way. We will work with our education support offices, making sure that transportation is aware of how this could benefit them, what these proposed changes look like when you're trying to get all those buses in and out. I don't know if you saw the superintendent's interview the first day of school with a local TV station, but our buses nearly travel the earth every day, 5,000 miles short of traveling the circumference of the earth. So we have to make sure that those facilities are appropriate for them. Next, moving to October, we'll be holding those Listening and Learning Tours. There are two big key pieces here that I'm really excited about, and that's launching both an internal and an external e-newsletter, ensuring that people get the news about the district from the district. This is, this is a big deal, and for employees or community members to hear from anyone other than us would really put us a step behind when it comes to owning our messaging. We'll continue meeting with those principals, and of course, the middle schools and high schools conceptual design reviews. And then, in November, complete that Listening and Learning Tour, incorporate those staff recommendations on seismic and land acquisition needs. Finishing up the year and going into the new year, of course, that's where you guys have a lot of heavy lifting in terms of the final, the first reading on the final bond package, the bond title, the action... in terms of the final, the first reading on the final bond package, the bond title, the action on the bond package. And so, what we'll do is we'll take those actions that you make and go back to our principals with updated toolkits that give site-specific information for them, so that they'll know exactly how this bond referendum affect, would affect them if it were to pass. And then, we'll go back to the community with those town hall meetings to report back to our both internal and external stakeholders on what we've heard, how we've incorporated it, and what the steps will be moving forward. Of course, we'll give you guys the same updated information, and specific to any communities that you may serve. And we'll also work closely with those community partners to make sure that they, too, can sound as smart as Mike. So that's kind of the general, big-picture overview of what we're doing on our end, and I'm happy to, I added one more picture of cute kids, because who doesn't like it, but it's a little tough for them to get into school there. But I'm happy to take any comments, questions, feedback on those flash drives that I gave you. You also have a video from Kristy Perry that you can use however you see fit, that just kind of gives overview information to, to our employees about what this whole thing is. Many, many of our employees have never worked in a school system during a bond referendum and don't necessarily know how it affects them.
Questions, comments? Marty, Sharon?
I just wanted to make a comment that I'm glad you're going to be working on these newsletters, both for employees and the public, because sometimes it seems like I'm learning things on the statement journal site that I would rather hear from the district.
I am lockstep with you on that one. Me, too.
Okay. Sharon?
So one thing I noticed on the talking points, that may be something for consideration, is when we were going through this process and the task force, we really honed in on the issue of this will help address equity across the district. And I get asked, every time I go to the grocery store already, about where this is at, what's going on, what is the purpose, what are we doing? And so, the one heading that I don't see, although I do appreciate the expanded CTE, because I, we know that's number-one priority, the seismic update, huge, but I think we should be talking about how it will address equity across the district.
Absolutely, I'll get that added in.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Chuck? Chuck, then Jesse?
Just, I know as employees of the district, you have to be careful about campaigning rather than reporting. Do school board members have any concerns in that area? I mean, are we free to campaign as much as we want to? Can we, I mean, can we go in?
I'm going to defer to the attorney on, I can give you legal advice, but I don't know if you want to.
So we could go, we could go into a public school building and advocate for this?
You can advocate as of an elected official, because you're not a public employee.
But we need to be careful what we ask staff to do for us.
That is true. That's another matter. Asking staff to help you do your advocacy is where you get into the no-nos.
So we can ask for bond talking points from staff?
Talking points are fine.
Yeah.
Advocacy is for you.
I kind of knew that, I just wanted to make sure we all had a little bit of a grip on that.
Okay, Jesse?
Well, I have two things that I would like to mention. First, with the posts, I think they're awesome. I think it's a great way to bring people the news and information about our district. I think it would also be really great if we could show people more than just things you were to see in the news. For example, I think people would like to see that we're fiscally responsible with the finances that they give us, since all of this is owned by the public. I think that'd be really cool if there's just a post that they didn't really, they wouldn't have seen it on the paper, but it just lets them know that, hey, we're working on best to make sure that we're doing a great job for you.
Right, and with the authorization to use those dollars tonight, we're saving, saving big bucks down the road, 100%.
Exactly. So I think that'd be really cool. And then, also, as far as the bond goes, also, it's a good time for me to kind of.
Sure. Yeah, sure.
Okay, make sure I'm following the rules here. So I think it'd be really great, something that I would like to look at, at least, just to see how it would work out, is we have, we're sitting in a building right now that is relocated right off of Commercial Street, which is great. I think we do need space for our administrative things. I think it'd be really cool if we looked at the idea of consolidating all of our admin into one building on the side of the city, and then, if we could see how much funds we could get from selling the buildings that we do have located in the city, for example, this one, the ones on Lancaster, just to see what, how, what that would even look like, or if it could save us money in the long term.
Yeah, actually, that's a great suggestion, and that's one that the Citizens Facility Task Force wrestled with as well.
Oh, sure.
Was to take a look at consolidating administrative functions in one building and then selling the commercial, the property that has commercial value, like this site and some others, Paulus, our riprographics building. Our technology center is right off State Street. And as we looked at that, we came up with a very preliminary cost estimate that it would be about 49, close to $50 million investment.
Yeah.
And would take several years, because selling property is, as we, as we know as a board, it takes a while to move through that transaction. So it was something that was looked at, and I think it's something that we continually need to keep in our minds as we move forward. It's not part of the base bond proposal. That was part of the reducing from the 766 million down, based on the polling results, down to the base bond, 619. But it's a great, great idea. And you're not the first one to bring it forward, though. Yeah, it was, it was reviewed at the task force.
Okay, good.
So thank you.
Yeah.
So Mike, you're saying the polling was not good for administration, but it was good for buildings for kids? I'm shocked.
Uh, yeah, that's kind of how it worked.
Anyone else, now that Jim has made his smart remark? Okay, all right. Thank you all, and we'll look forward to your future updates.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also on your flash.
Uh, information items. Board calendar, our next meeting will be a work session on Tuesday, September 26th. We will be starting at 6 o'clock. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, at this point in time, we don't have an executive session scheduled. All right, the other item that we, I added, 9B, there are two openings for the OSBA Marion Regional Legislative Policy Committee. If anyone from this board is interested, please see me after the meeting, and we can get those names submitted for election. Okay? Public comment, there were none. At least, there weren't before the break. Still none. Thank you, Alice. Okay, moving on, board activity report. Anybody done anything that they would like to share? I'm not seeing any hands. Oh, Marty, then Jim?
I have two things, and I may talk very slowly now, for you, Chairman. First, it was really exciting to go to the dedication of McKay's turf field. Never actually stood on a turf field before. It was really very nice. So that was really exciting. The other thing I wanted to mention, it is September, which is National Preparedness Month. And as members of CERT, I want to remind you, it's not if, but when. That 9-0 will hit and go up the coast from Northern California up to Vancouver, B.C. There will be no bridge access, no food coming in, no water. Please prepare two to three weeks, minimum, food and water for your family and your animals.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Jim?
Real quickly, it wasn't any activity. I just wanted to thank Mark Bateman and Rachel Dewey Thorsett from our Budget Committee for being here for the supplemental budget hearing, and I know Levy was here earlier. They're members of our Budget Committee from our public side, so thanks for taking a night out and joining us for our supplemental budget and the discussions that followed.
Kathy?
So I was also at the McKay Field, as several others were. But I wanted to mention that whoever designed the field that had the nice arrangements of the sponsors along the edge did a wonderful job. I talked to Michael Roth for one, and he said he'd never been so honored with that. It was a great idea, and I think it did a good job of showing the district's appreciation for what those folks have done for us.
Anyone else? Jesse?
I was also at the McKay turf ceremony, turf field ceremony, and I just want to say that I think it's awesome that they were finally able to get a turf field. I know, playing sports as a kid, playing on a turf field is, it feels great. And it's just awesome that they have the same opportunity that the other schools have, to be able to play on a nicer field that will last, and you can actually go play on it with other sports as well. So first off, I want to shout out to them for that. And then, also, today, went to the SKEF fundraiser. That was, it was great. Food was great. Everybody was awesome. So they did, they did a really good job putting that one on.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, all right. Superintendent?
All right, I'll give quick updates here. Today, we did show the McKay family their logo on the turf field, because they weren't there. And we have a couple other people who weren't there that night that we are going to bring forward to make sure that they see their logo on the field. They were really honored just to get that time, and our principal and director of secondary education was there. I also want to do a shout-out to Sue Luthra and Jen Van Slander, who got this wild idea that we should put, they should put together a trauma conference. And they joined in with SKEA on this, and I think we had over 600 educators at the convention center at a behavior and trauma conference. And the word we got back was not, need more of this. We had our, many of our own employees, our school psychologist, Chris Moore, was a keynote, and it was a fabulous event. And they pulled it off really well. And I joke with them that it was our first annual. So they know they're on the hook for next year. Enrollment, fourth day of school, we're at 42,875 students, so we're pushing 43. We will have some drops. That number will drop as we settle out within the next month. We are doing reviews of class size, especially at the elementary level, as those shifts are happening. We do that review each week until we get settled in with our class size numbers. And finally, and I'll send you the video on this, but we are, do have a district-wide initiative around using person-first language. So you see, I have on Mardi Gras beads. They actually do match my outfit tonight. Often, my Mardi Gras beads don't. But it's about speaking as students first, rather than defining them by their disability. So as we talk about our students, we want to remember that words matter. And when we talk about students, we talk about them as students who might be homeless, students who might be learning English, students who might have autism, rather than calling them autistic students or special ed students. So we're working on some person-first language. If you catch a staff member that isn't using person-first language, you take their beads. So these are throughout our district, and all of our employees have seen the person-first video, and I'll send it on to you.
So if I catch somebody who doesn't use first-person language, I can take their beads, and then I could wear them?
Correct. Yep. Game on. Game on, Jesse, game on.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. If that's it, then we are adjourned until the meeting on the 26th.